Everybody, it is Tuesday, March 9th. It is 6:31. I'd like to call to order the Groton Town Council Committee of the whole meeting. Councillors present, our Councillors Bordelain, Franco, Melendez, Aubrey, Parker, and Zepary. Councillor Heath notified that he is in transit due to a family emergency. And we are at seven councillors. Right. Calendar Communications, Councillor Parker.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councillor Heath is not, or Councillor Franco is next.
Thank you. I had communications by email and chatted with residents in Groton, most notably regarding some blight and economic development issues. And I've also been in contact with Mr. Reiner at our planning department regarding some blight, vacant property, and some other enforcement code issues that I've requested to come for the council in the future. I also spoke with people interested in what's going on with the Safety Committee and relation, in relation to the police oversight and when that will be coming to the council. I've been watching a lot of things going on over in the city of Groton. So, watching the election, and it's been very robust primary. And I'm awaiting the outcome, which hopefully we should hear on Friday. And also with Councillor Parker, the Chief of Police in Groton has retired. And I'd like to thank him for his time in Groton and wish him well on his future endeavors. Thank you.
Retiring until May.
And I'm sorry.
Also, Councillor Baumgartner arrived while Councillor Franco was speaking. So we're at eight councillors right now. Thank you. So, Councillor Baumgartner, we skipped over you. Did you want to take your turn for communication, sir?
Yes, I'll be brief. Just want to thank the hundreds of individuals that came out yesterday to participate in the Democratic primary. We are awaiting the certified results, but I just want to say how humbled I am to stand here as a councillor and just very much appreciate the trust this council has placed in me over the last three years. You know, many of the residents, or the residents that are watching this meeting may know that I was appointed to this council back in 2018 by this many councillors here. And it has been an absolute joy and privilege to serve with all of you. So again, we will have a better idea of what happens next on Friday. But I just want to thank each councillor for your kindness over the years. And regardless of the outcome, look forward to working with each and every one of you to move the town and the city forward. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Councillor Aubrey.
I just want to mention, I've had quite a few calls in reference to the bluff. I guess that's what we're referring to it as now. And surprisingly, it has not all been negative. There certainly have been some people that are concerned about the size, but there's also been a lot of people that are very much in favor of what's happening. So that was pleasant, because I do want to see this move forward in some manner. So that was surprising that I got so many, but I did, and it was very informative. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bordelain.
Thank you. I just have gotten, let's see, I got one communication via email from one of the participants in the last meeting that spoke under public comment, thanking me for, you know, asking questions and basically apologized. And it was a little shocked by how I was not allowed to speak based on the rules. So I did receive a thank you from a constituent for that and encouraged me to continue to speak up. With that, I just wanted to lend my support Friday, no matter the outcome. Best of luck, and hopefully we can move forward. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councillor Melendez.
Nothing to report.
Councillor Zepary. You're muted, Councillor Zepary.
I'll report.
Thank you. And it's me, because Councillor Heath is in transit right now. So, I attended the meeting of the Board of Ed Town Council, RTM, in city. The joint communication meeting, pretty much is what it is. And Superintendent Austin spoke first, and she was talking about the plan to bring kids back into the schools. And I'm sure you've seen, she's posted it online, all parents have received the plan, I believe. But they are in process of doing that. They have a 0% budget that was forwarded from the superintendent to the Board of Ed. And it is now the Board of Ed's budget, and they are working on that. There were some position changes that we'll be hearing about within, nothing new, but just changes, kind of like what happens on the town side, where maybe things are consolidated, and they change responsibilities and adjust the title as appropriate. Superintendent Austin also reported about the teachers, the vaccination process for the teachers. And many of the teachers have received their first vaccine, which is good news. And, let's see. Mr. Stanford reported on the city primary, and that the chief would be retiring this spring. Moderator Evan spoke briefly about what was coming their way. And of course, they get mostly what we send their way, but about a referral that they are discussing in their finance committee. All right, that's the report for that. And then I just want to congratulate both candidates for stepping up, candidates for the city mayoral position. It is not easy to put your name out there and put yourself out there and run. And congratulations to both of you for making yourself available for the public. And I'm sure that we will be supportive of whoever is determined to be the winner after the recount. So, thank you very much to both of you. And we are on to Mr. Burt for communication, sir. Do you have COVID updates, Mr. Burt, on the vaccines, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. In the last report, which would be last Thursday, so we'll have some updated information in a couple of days. But there were 109 cases over the two-week period. The average daily rate dropped again. It's been several weeks in a row it's been dropping. It dropped from the report before at 20.9 down to 20.1. So we've had several instances where it's been dropping. Cumulative cases to date, 2,338. Cumulative deaths, 83. And I hope everyone saw that article in the paper listing them. And just heartfelt feelings out to the families. This next little piece is about a week out of date. It says, there was an article that said Groton has received 6,464 first doses as of March 1st, which would be about 16.82% of the town. My guess is you're probably more like quarter of the town at this point. And at that time, on March 1st, they were estimating 80.62% of Groton residents, 75 and older, had received at least one dose, and 69.23 for 65 to 74. So making some good headway there. Statewide data, there was some new data out yesterday. Doses distributed to date, 1,434,565, so about 1.4 million. Total doses administered, a little over 1.2 million. First doses, first dose administered, 883,000, which is about 25% of the population. So it's getting there. 331,000 have had the whole course, had full shots. Now, if I'm tentatively planning on opening offices at the end of the month, if rates keep doing okay, I'll keep an eye on the variants. We'll see what they do. But tentatively, end of the month, senior centre, of course, would be lagging behind a bit. They won't be quite, we're keeping in touch with the state to see what the recommendations are in senior centres. So we'll obviously go with whatever the state guidelines or recommendations are. So hopefully the rates keep dropping. And I had one other, one question for the council. For the last, at the last meeting, it came up, the topic of Board of Education retiree colas. I wanted to know if there's a consensus to have me order these cost studies, on what it would cost to give a cola. And just a little background, with the town union contracts, there's language in there that we have to automatically look at it, at the colas. For the Board of Ed contracts, they have no language to address it. It's entirely up to someone to make a request. I went back to 1997, and there hasn't been a request since at least then. I'm not giving any opinion either way. It can be done. Just, I just want a consensus if we want to order the study. It'll take a few months, probably, two, three, four months to get the study.
Is there objection to Mr. Burt gathering the information? I saw a couple of hands go up. Councillor Aubrey, and then Councillor Franco, just if you could just offer your opinion on whether you'd like Mr. Burt to pursue this. Thank you.
I'm not sure.
Councillor Franco?
I also am not sure, and I think I have more questions.
About that particular topic?
Yes.
Okay.
Just about how does, like, so the superintendent, Nora, the Board of Ed, is charged with bringing up colas? It's up to the council to do it?
Well, it's really, there's no language in it, period. It's not addressed. They're not guaranteed any kind of cola or any kind of process to review it, but it's not disallowed. But no one's brought it up to the council as of at least 97, if not further.
So, has anybody brought it?
One person reached out to Councillor Zepary.
And may I ask, is it, would it be proper for us to take it up? Or at least allowed the Board of Ed to take it up first?
Well, I mean, it's up to the council. They would be a recommendation to the council. And I should mention, there are three contracts. There are the secretaries, the maintenance workers, janitorial, and then the administration staff. So there are three different contracts.
I see. I'm not exactly sure what the proper process or procedure might, should possibly be, but thank you.
Like I said, there's not a set process, because it's not in the contracts. We and our contracts have a set process.
I'm sorry, Councillor Aubrey, I thought, I didn't think you were offering anything else. We'll go back to you. I apologize for skipping.
No problem. If I might, you're saying that actually Councillor Zepary was the one that requested that we look at this?
Well, a retiree had approached them, I believe.
You're right. I remember that. I'm kind of feeling like Councillor Franco, that I'm not sure. Have you had a conversation with the superintendent of schools?
Yeah, I reached out to her, and they have really no official roles, basically, their opinion. It's all up to the council. Though some of them thought it was actually the retirement board, but it's not. It's the town council that would have the authority. I also touched base with Dr. Ganeer, and he had never known a request to come to them.
And do you have any idea, well, I guess you're going to find out what a study for something like that would cost? Is that the idea?
Yeah, the study would be to determine the cost. And the study, you're probably a couple thousand per study, so you're probably talking 5, 6, 7,000. Probably, I think, on the lower end. I'd have to talk to Directors Agame to see if they still have money in the budget for more studies. Otherwise, I'll have to go through a process to get a little more funding. I think we could probably figure it out, though.
I think I'll wait to see what Councillor Zepary has to say. Thank you, John.
Councillor Zepary, and then Bordelain.
You did.
You're muted, councillors. There you go.
As you know, I'm generally opposed to anything that raises the taxes in the town. And certainly, cost of living increases do that. But more than being opposed to raising taxes, I'm proponent for justice. And if we're giving, and we have given, tax, cola raises to many of the employees for the town of Groton, I think it's wrong for us to ignore people just because they work for the Board of Education. I also think that the particular person that approached me had been a school secretary for more than 20 years. And her retirement, her annual retirement, came to about $6,000. And hadn't been increased in over, I don't remember, I think it's eight years since she went on retirement. I think we owe it to these people to treat them as well as we treat the rest of the town employees. And that's just my sense of fair play. I would be very happy if we could do it without raising taxes, without paying the taxpayers' money, spending the taxpayers' money. But I think we have to spend the taxpayers' money when there's an issue of justice or when it's just the right thing to do, as it is in this case.
Councillor Bordelain.
Thank you. I think it would be appropriate if we had it as an actual agenda item, so that we can have, like, full deliberation on it with more information to kind of research, and data, and information to kind of see. I do agree that I think the cost of living is very important to look at, and I think people do deserve it. But more detail, like, what types of employees, how many employees? You know, I just think it would be nice to have some more information and make it an agenda item for full discussion. Because under this section, I could ask a bunch of things, but I don't think it's the appropriate section to ask. Is that correct, Mayor?
Well, this is what Mr. Burt was asking. Do we want to have him go and gather all this information and come back to us?
Well, I mean, before spending all the $5,000, I think just more information about it in general. Just to, you know, tonight, I feel ill-prepared to make an adequate decision. I do support raises, but I would like to do some research, look at surrounding areas, and have some data on how many employees this would affect, like, things like that before me first, before saying, go spend 5, 6, 7,000 for something that, the research. So I could support this, and I'm for cost of living increases. I just would like a little bit more of a write-up. There's nothing in our agenda packet. Thank you.
We're going to go to Councillor Melendez next, because he hasn't spoken yet.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just have a question. Is this for a non-union employees, these colas?
Well, the, I don't know, no, they're all, they're all union employees. Or had been, when they were employed. They're all under union contracts.
Okay. I just, I'm just, I don't know, I figured there would be some, some, I guess this is the process they had in place to come to us for a request. But, I don't know, I feel like, I don't know, I guess the study would be what we would need in order to make a decision. So I guess I'm for the study, because otherwise I would have no information in order to make an informed decision. So, yeah.
And I can come back and bring the number of employees. There's not much else I could pull, though, because there is no process, there is no language. There's not a lot. And I did put in my report on Friday, asking what the councillors thought. In the future, you might want to reach out to me and ask me your questions, so I could bring the data to the meeting. I was hoping to get some email response.
We'll go to Councillor Baumgartner, because he hasn't spoken yet.
Yes, just, I guess, a question for the council. If we're going to dive deep into discussion on this, can we make this an agenda item? That way, we can get the materials ahead of time, and we have a busy agenda.
So, the thing was that Mr. Burt would like to know if we want to make this an agenda item. Do you want to make this an agenda item is what we're trying to find out right now, guys. And I've heard, I've heard two people say yes, and a couple more aren't sure that they want more information. So, when I'm hearing you want more information, to me, that's saying, put this on the agenda, and let Mr. Burt do his thing and come back to us. So, so far, I've heard three people that aren't sure, and would, sounds like you need more information on it, and two people that definitely are interested in exploring this further. So, I'm going to see if, let's see, who hasn't spoken yet? Did we lose Councillor Parker? There's Councillor Parker. Councillor Parker, did you wish to chime in on this before I go to second and third time?
I'm for putting it as an agenda item.
Thank you. Councillor Aubrey, have you decided if you want it as an agenda item?
I need to ask one question.
Yes.
Are we talking about when they're currently employed? When, so we're talking about when they're retired.
Yes.
They're being able to be part of what we do for all our employees for our retirement benefit. Okay. I need a little clarification. I wasn't quite sure what you were saying. If that's the case, I definitely think we should look into it. I appreciate the town manager doing that.
I'm going to chime in right now, before we go to second time. I think that it would be wise to look into it further. This issue has never come up, and I would appreciate Mr. Burt doing the research for us and bringing it back. And then we can make a decision about how we wish to proceed. So I am in favor also of having this explored a little bit further. So, everybody has spoken. Councillor Franco, did you want to add something else? And then we'll go to Councillor Bordelain for her last, or her next question.
I'm good with going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bordelain, did you have another question?
Yes, thank you. I guess what I'm confused about is, I'm for bringing it on as an agenda item, obviously, that's what I stated. But what I'm confused about at the beginning, you said something about it would take $5,000 to $6,000 to research.
No, to get the cost of it.
Can I finish first, please? Thank you. So I can finish my thought while you're talking over me. I'm confused as to what that cost was you were talking about.
Actually, get the actual, to find out what it would cost to give colas. There's not a lot of information. I think the agenda item will be mainly just an extension of this discussion. But all it can do is give you the cost of getting the study, as well as the number of retirees. That's about all it has. There's no process.
So then, my question is, as an agenda item, then we would, maybe, it sounds like we need to enact a process. Is that something we can do, is my other question? Is there a process that needs to be written for this?
If anything, we'd probably follow what we do on all our contracts.
Which is?
Every two years, they're supposed to reach out to us, but most of them, there's a slight, just a slight difference between each one. Typically, what it is, is they reach out to us every two years to ask for one. But there's some that don't really specify, just automatically, now, every two years, we reach out to everybody.
Okay. So, yeah, I'm for it being an agenda item. I think we should come up with a process and make it part of the other, like the other ones. It would seem to make sense to me that, I'm shocked that this one kind of is falling to the wayside. Thank you.
Right. So, Mr. Burt, we'll add this to our list of agenda items, please. Thank you very much, sir. Approval of minutes, Councillor Baumgartner, item 4A, please, 2021, 163, February 23rd, minutes.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes of February 23rd, 2021. So moved.
Thank you.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Franco. Seeing no discussion, we'll vote on acceptance of 2021, 163, February 23rd, 2021, minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? I'm sorry, Parker. So, seven in favor, zero opposed, one abstention. Parker, we are at eight councillors. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have new business. And with us this evening, we have Mr. Barry, I believe, is here. Mr. Morrison and Mr. Goodhue from Shenacostet. And this is item 5A, 2021, 181, 2021 Shenacostet Rules, Regulations, and Rates. Page 12, please. And I believe we are on Councillor Parker, please.
Make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the proposed changes for the Shenacostet Golf Course 2021, Rates and Rules, and Rules, Rates and Rules and Regulations. I so move.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Franco. I'm not sure if Mr. Barry would like to take the floor, or if you want to turn it over to Mr. Morrison or Mr. Goodhue.
No, I'm more than happy to take over.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mark Barry, Director of Parks and Recreation. The Shenacostet Golf Course Rates, Rules, and Regulations are submitted for approval by the town council on an annual basis. Prior to submission, the input was sought from the Golf Advisory Board. The proposed rates for the 2021 peak season were discussed at the December GAB meeting, and after further discussion, were proposed at their February meeting. The proposed rates for 2021 are based on a variety of factors, including a review of the 10-year history of rate changes, the projected budget for FYE 2022, current local market rates, and recommendations from the National Golf Foundation Study of Shenacostet. So, over the last 10 years, the course has made adjustments to the daily and season pass fees to remain competitive in a tightening market, to incentivize new members to join, and reflect the larger economic conditions at that time. The proposed FYE 22 golf budget is projected to see an increase in expenses of 1.7%. Based on current and projected levels of play, the golf course revenue is estimated to net $84,000 above expenses. While we feel Shenacostet offers a unique golfer experience, we do take into consideration the daily and season pass fees offered at surrounding courses. Based on current information, Shenacostet daily fees are the highest in the area. The National Golf Foundation Study recommended that rates not be adjusted by more than 3% from one year to the next, to remain within the range of typical cost of living increases. The motion at the February meeting made by the GAB was to increase the rates for adult, associate, and the associate-plus season pass rates by 3% for 2021. Other season pass rates were not adjusted, citing a cumulative increase of nearly 19% over the last 10 years. To remain competitive in the local market, daily rates were not proposed to increase. The GAB also made a motion to accept the proposed changes to the rules and regulations. After that meeting, the Golf Advisory Board and the Parks and Rec Commission held a joint meeting in February to discuss the proposed rates and the rules and regulations. The Commission made a motion to recommend the rates proposed by the GAB. Rules and regulations were reviewed, and a motion was made to recommend the proposed changes. So, we have the rates, and we have the rules and regulations. And I believe in your packet, the council should have seen, should have received a copy of the regulations noting the changes that were proposed and recommended by both the Golf Advisory Board and the Parks and Recreation Commission. So, we propose that the changes for the 2021 rates and the rules and regulations be accepted by the council.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. We did receive that information in our packet. And I'd just like to thank yourself and the golf course staff for the excellent job they're doing with managing the uptick in business. It's very, very lovely. Any councillors have questions for Mr. Barry regarding rates or rules and regulations? I think things have been vetted pretty well, having gone through the Golf Advisory Board and through the Parks Commission already. I think that was a wise move, to sure to do that. Councillor Bordelain.
Thank you. Just wanted to thank you for your report. And are you seeing any increase or need in any other areas with the rates in regards to the golf carts as well?
I think when we looked at the golf carts fees, they were right in line with what other, I'm looking for that right now. Were in line with what other courses are charging. So we, yeah, actually, looking at Shenacostet is 18. We're towards the higher, and there are two other courses that are actually charging 20. But we're, you know, the difference is only a couple of dollars between what the different courses in the area are charging.
Okay. And then my other question is, payment options for this course. What types of payments do you guys take at the centre? Is it just, you know, do you have online? for, for this course, what types of payments do you guys take at the center? Is it just, you know, do you have online options as well?
Yeah, we don't provide, we used to provide a, like a payment plan and we've gone away from that. So now it's, they pay for the entire season at once. And there are a couple of options. They can pay in person and I'm pretty sure Todd could confirm this, that they can also, there's an online option also.
Okay, I just wanted to check to see if there was the option to.
Yeah, we've been encouraging people to, or encouraging people to sign up for tee times online. We're trying to streamline and make the entire process much easier.
All right, thank you.
Masters of Perry, you have the floor.
Yeah, I had a question. I'm a little confused. You had said that we were, that Shenandoah Cossit fees are about 3% higher than the neighboring golf courses?
No, not three, no, I didn't, I didn't say 3%. I said the, the daily fees for Shenandoah Cossit are the highest in the area.
And are we raising those fees by 3% also?
No, we're not proposing to raise the daily fees. We're trying to be sensitive to the local market conditions.
Okay.
We don't want to price ourselves out where we're already at the highest point for daily fees.
We're having a 3% increase in membership fees then?
For just a couple of positions, because when we went, when we went back and looked at the, the 10-year history, we saw that some of the different pass types had increased by 19%. What we did a few years ago, when the market, this is pre-COVID and the market was, was much tighter, is we had reduced some of the season pass fees by 10% and the goal was to try to increase the number of season pass players. And we never corrected for that 10% adjustment. So in looking at a 10-year history, there was a couple of areas where the increase over 10 years had been significantly less than some of the other pass types. So what we proposed to do was to start to correct what we had done three or four years ago.
Thank you.
Are there any other first time speakers before we go to second round? Counselor Bordelain.
Thank you. I apologize. I found my other part of my notes here. Looking at the different categories, family, youth, senior, citizen, adult. Is there a military category? Were you offering discounts to military personnel, active or retired?
It's, it's there.
Did I miss it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe it's on the bottom of the rate sheet.
It is.
Unless it got cut off.
No, it's, it's there.
I'm looking now. Hold on, sorry. I don't see it on mine.
Yeah, the military receive the resident rate. Yes, right.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. I don't, I'm not seeing it on my form, but I could be missing it. Oh, I see it down in the writing. Sorry. I was looking it up. I was looking at the list under the different categories, so I didn't see it on the bottom. Sorry about that. Because I didn't, because I didn't see it as a category, wasn't looking for it at the fine star down below. And then my next question is, what age bracket are you guys consider senior and youth?
Youth is 21 and under and senior is 62 and over.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no other hands, we'll vote on 2021-18, 2021 Shenandoah Cossit Rules, Regulations and Rates. And we are at eight counselors. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen, Mr. Barry, Mr. Morrison and Mr. Goodhue.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Very nice presentation.
All right, we are on to 5B, 2021-102 Southeastern Connecticut Regional Traffic Unit Mutual Police Assistance Compact. This is page 21 and I believe we have Chief Azaro with us this evening. Yes, he is. And I think we are on to Counselor Franco, please.
Yes. Make a motion to recommend a resolution authorizing the town manager, John Burt, to sign the Southeastern Connecticut Regional Traffic Unit Mutual Police Assistance Compact. I so move.
Second, Bordelain.
Thank, thank you. Moved by Franco, seconded by Bordelain. Chief Azaro, you have the floor, sir. You're muted, chief.
There we go.
There you go.
This affiliation is something we've actually had in place for quite a while. We work closely with our surrounding communities, particularly when it comes to accident investigations. They're very technical and highly specialized investigation, particularly when there's serious injury or death. And we've been fortunate to work collaboratively with the towns of Stonington as well as Ledger for, for several years at these accident sites. Recently, the City of Groton Police has, has indicated their willingness to participate in this. And essentially what it means if we have a serious injury accident or an accident where death is involved, that we'll call off the specially trained officer. Those officers go to additional training for accident reconstruction. They learn a lot about, you know, impact, the mechanisms of injury in the, in the crash itself, road conditions, many facets towards the technical aspects of investigation, you know, road surfaces, vehicle components. They work at the scene of the incident where they will come out, they'll use what's called total station, which basically a piece of surveying equipment that they learn how to measure the scene, the roadways, the debris on the roadway, the skid marks, all the things, they thoroughly document it. And then if, if ultimately there's a prosecutable case and there's an offender that we are looking to arrest, they will put together the evidentiary components of this case and we'll forward it to court. So the agency that is the, the lead agency is the town. If it were to happen in the town of Groton, our officers would investigate it, but we would be supplemented by officers from the other, the other towns who have that specialized training. There's only a handful of them. It is expensive training to get. Accident reconstruction is a, a multi-tiered training that officers go to, so it's generally, you know, many weeks at a time. Sometimes it's out of state. So we have some officers trained that way, Stonington and Ledger do as well. I think Groton City just got their first officer trained. So were there to be an accident, we would, we would call out this team and those that are available would show up to, to process the scene and ultimately, you know, find out the cause of the accident and determine causative factors, contributing factors and all the other and evidentiary things that they need to collect at the scene and that would ultimately go to the host agency. I, I think it's, I think it's a good program. We've benefited from it and we've taken our expertise, those officers that are trained and shared with the other communities. So I think it's good all around and, and in the end it does leverage the talents of our officers and those of our surrounding communities. It's collaborative and cost effective for me to do this.
Thank you, chief. I, I think the last part that you mentioned is the key here. It's leveraging cooperation in the talents that you share in our surrounding community. So thank you for pursuing this. Any counselors have questions for the chief? Counselor Obree? You're muted, Counselor Obree? You're still muted, Counselor.
Joe and I are having a race to see who's slower. Is there a cost for this mutual aid? How do they bill for it?
There, there is not. The cost is, if, if our officers were to go out to a scene, obviously if they were off duty, we'd have to pay them their rates, but there's, the costs are the training itself. We have officers that are trained. Right now we have four officers. So this is, this is merely to enter into an inter-local agreement, so it does require the council's consent. But there's no cost associated with that. And the cost is if there was an actual scene where we'd have to put people who are on duty or on overtime, pay them. And the other cost would be the training. Right now we do have officers trained as, as do the other communities, so those are the, those are the, and there are equipment costs, I should add that. Fortunately, by doing this collaboration and having shared resources, we don't duplicate that. So, you know, I talked to you about total station equipment, that is many thousands of dollars. Some of the highly specialized pieces of equipment that are used to, to do this type of investigation costs a lot of money. So if we've already got that on hand, there's no sense other communities buying it and vice versa. So that's really what we're trying to do by having this agreement. So we share some of those costs rather than the town of Groton buying all of this equipment and all of this stuff to do an investigation. We can buy part of it, Ledger can buy part of it, Stony can buy part of it. So we're sharing that cost for something that, when it's used, it needs to be used by people who are highly trained. So I hope that answers the question.
If I might. So if there was something that became a larger cost, then we'd talk about it.
Yeah, if it was, you know, all of the, I, I'm not sure what that would be other than an equipment.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. You said we'd have some equipment, Ledger would have some equipment. So if we need to replace something or add something, then it'd probably be a conversation about it.
Correct, correct. Or it would be something included in our budget. But again, the, the stuff that we've purchased and some of it, we do pursue grants and certainly by working with other communities, the ability to get those grants is much more attractive to the agencies, whether it's the state or federal government that gives the money if they know that you're going to use it in cooperation with other departments. They get more bang for their buck by, by doing, providing funds for, for multi-agency response.
Thank you.
Counselor Bordelain.
Thank you. I think it's great to have a collaborative effort, especially in a time of need or emergency, just in general. So I think it's a, it's a great position to be in. What surrounding towns in particular, is it narrowed down to a certain number or is it just Connecticut region? Is there an exact, like, who that will encompass?
You, you should have an inter-local agreement that identifies the towns. It's the town of Groton, the town of Stonington, the town of Ledger and the city of Groton.
Okay, perfect.
It should be, it should be in that inter-local agreement that forwarded.
Yep, no, I just like to talk about it on the record too, so the people at home listening can also hear which towns are, you know, can hear that as well. I think it's great. I mean, because we, we don't just drive in our own town. It's, it's great to be, have these emergency responses available if needed. So I think it's a great option and it's something that obviously is needed. So thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward.
All right, I see no other hands. We will vote on 2021-102 Southeastern Connecticut Regional Traffic Unit Mutual Police Assistance Compact. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
That was easy.
Unanimously, eight, eight counselors, zero opposed, zero abstentions. Thank you, chief.
Everybody.
Good night, sir. All right, we are on to item 5C. There is no motion on this. This is page 27 in your packet, please. And this is an item we've talked about at least two, three times in the past. So what we are looking for tonight is some feedback on next steps and where we would like to go. And that item is 2020-41-4, Short Term Rental Discussion on page 27. Okay, and I'm not sure Mr. Burt is, if Mr. Reiner is here. Hi, Mr. Reiner.
Good evening.
Thank you for being with us. I understand you were going to provide us with some questions that would help guide us and help us make some decisions.
I hope so.
Thank you. I'll give you the floor, sir.
All right, excellent. Good evening, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Thanks for having me tonight. So we can certainly put together an ordinance or a regulation looking at short-term rentals. I know this is something the council and many others have been talking about for some time now. But before we took the, the dive in, I think there are kind of a, a couple of important items. One, to get a general consensus of, is this where the, the council or majority of the council wants to go for direction? And then if so, what are the things we're looking to accomplish with this ordinance? What are the things we want to actually regulate? Because many municipalities across the nation regulate short-term rentals in different ways. And some of the items that they're looking to address, whether it's noise, traffic, party houses, negative neighborhood impacts, loss of housing for residents, gentrification, you know, those are seen as some of the negatives. Then there's also the flip side and some of the positives of, some people see short-term rentals being a way of spurring more economic development and getting reinvestment in some of our housing stock that might not have been invested in before. We also want to think about, are there certain areas in town or zoning districts that we do want to address short-term rentals in versus others that we don't? It doesn't make any sense for us to regulate short-term rentals in a commercial district or a multifamily housing district or a mixed-use district. Probably not, because those are already commercialized districts. But if the council is going to do something, all right, in residential districts, or maybe it's in lot sizes under a certain size, there's a lot of ways of going after this particular issue and addressing it. And I don't need all the answers tonight, but I kind of wanted to throw a lot of ideas out there. And if there are things that people are interested in, we want to take some time, we want to take some care in how we move forward and address this.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner, for those kind of guiding, guiding questions for us. So at this point, I'll open it up, open up the floor to counselors. And we, we've had multiple discussions and we were charged with going forth and gathering information. We brought information back. You've heard from people that let their properties. You've heard from people that are unhappy that properties are being let. So really now we need to make a decision about what we want to do. Do we want to do any kind of regulation? Do we want to do any kind of registration? And just this week, I forwarded another email from yet another part of town where a neighbor has an issue with something going on there. So it's continuing, we continue to receive correspondence from our constituents about this issue. So I really think it's important that we come to some kind of consensus about what we want to do. Counselors of Perry, you have the floor, sir.
I was just, I was just going to say I'm happy that Chief Azaro is still here because there are many existing ordinances and statutes that could allow for the regulation of some of the dissatisfaction that many people are experiencing. Parking on your lawn, noisy parties. And if the police were, were realized that we have a concern for this, especially in this environment, perhaps they would be more responsible, or I don't say they're not responsible, but they'd be more willing to press some of these issues when they receive complaints. I know we've got a, most of us got a letter in the last, I reviewed my mail today and found a letter from a Groton resident who was very upset by a party that was very noisy next door in one of these short-term rentals. That's the sort of thing that I think you can call the police about and ask them to get folks to quiet it down. And, you know, I, on the one hand, I like to see as much freedom for property use by an owner as possible. But on the other hand, neighboring property owners have to be protected. And so, insofar as we can, we should be using existing ordinances and then look to recommendations for how we can curb this more reasonably where existing ordinances don't cover. Thank you.
So, so Counselors of Perry, I'm, I'm going to try to get, get answers out of people tonight. And I know it's not always easy because it is, there's a lot of gray, right? But do you wish to pursue this further and have the council take action on this item? Or do you wish to have this removed from the agenda list?
I'd like to see it go further. I, I think I'd like to see it go further. I, I think there are things we can do to help these people. I mean, the people who are aggrieved in those neighborhoods. But I'd also like to see us maximize the use of existing law.
Okay. Thank you very much for clarifying. Counselor Baumgartner, your hand was up next, sir.
Thank you, Meta Mayor. I too am supportive of regulating short-term rentals. As someone who has utilized Airbnbs in the past, you know, I recognize that it is a tool to bring people into our, our town and Groton as a whole. However, Airbnbs or short-term rentals, having them should not be at the expense of existing neighborhoods and the safety of existing neighborhoods. You know, again, we need to be careful about turning residential properties into commercial properties. I think we should also make a distinction between individuals who, you know, who allow their personal homes to be utilized for Airbnbs as opposed to a commercial owner. So, you know, again, I would, one second. Meta Mayor.
Yes.
I may reclaim my time at a, at another moment. My apologies.
Yes, yes, sir. Okay. Are there other councilors who wish to speak on this? Counselor Opry?
I think we should, we should definitely be looking at this and going a little further with it. The only thing that I think that we have to think about as we do this is whatever rules we put on these homes that may be affected, apply whether it is somebody renting your house or you, you are having your own party. And so we always, we need to be aware of that because I don't think the homeowner would be very happy if we put rules out about parking on the lawn and when you have to stop potty and then yada, yada, yada. And we go to somebody's house assuming that it's a short-term rental and it's not, it's the owner and we're telling him to move his cars off his lawn. So I think we've, we've got, it's a kind of a fine line we walk. And we will need the advice of John Reiner. We will need the, the advice of the chief in order to arrive at something. But we do need to, we do need to work on it. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Counselor Baumgartner, are you ready to reclaim your time? Okay, we'll go, we will go on then.
Yes, no, thank you. Thank you, Meta Mayor.
You have a minute forty.
I do. Sorry. It's been a hectic day and a bit short on sleep to say the least, but sorry about that. Just again, I think it's important to distinguish the difference between a residential property that is used as an Airbnb as opposed to a commercial property that falls in a residential zone. You know, we ought to have regulations, in my opinion, to prevent commercial properties taking over residential neighborhoods to the extent that it becomes, you know, that neighborhoods lose it, it's the, you know, the, its charm and the essence of a neighborhood. You know, and I also think any regulation the town does, we need to coordinate closely with Noank as well as the city of Groton. I would support having a unified set of regulations. That way every, you know, individuals who are coming into our community also understands the expectations that the town as a whole sets. So again, I, I don't want to discourage individuals from frequenting our shops and restaurants and staying in, in town or city or the city for a night or two or a weekend. Again, our, the success of our, of our, of Groton is, you know, especially for Mystic and, you know, our, our success is driven by tourism. So we shouldn't deter that. But we also shouldn't, you know, allow our neighborhoods to utilize for, you know, commercial purposes when they're not zoned for that. So again, just, we need to distinguish between commercial properties and residential properties in terms of Airbnb use. And then would like to work with our subdivisions and, and other neighborhoods that have their own zoning jurisdiction to have a uniform set of regulations that each body can adopt.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Franco.
Thank you. I am, it's been quite, quite a while since we've, we've spoken with the town attorney. But I remember guidance from her stating how we need to respect property owner rights as well and how difficult it will be to come up with some type of an ordinance that doesn't infringe on that and the legal aspects of creating any kind of ordinance that if it pertains to a short-term rental, it will pertain to all properties in town or, you know, if you had long-term rentals. And so I think this is a very difficult situation, creating an ordinance. And that's why majority of the towns don't have them. They've worked on some things and, and a lot of times it's not always as easy as everybody thinks. I don't like that, you know, short-term rentals pop in and, and the neighborhood changes. No, I don't like that. But there are property rights, the owner has rights to their property to do things like this at the moment. I would be in favor of probably leaning more towards some type of registration of these properties and possibly a town fee or a, if I don't even know what legally we can do of some kind of tax, housing tax. Because I'm not really sure how we do that with local in comparison to possibly like a hotel tax that they have. That's pretty large. It's 15%. And as many of the issues that pop up, I believe law enforcement might be able to take care of them, like the party houses and things of that nature. There's also code violations of maybe having a house full of people and maybe they don't have the proper like fire extinguishers and smoke detectors and things of that nature. And those are things that I want to make sure that if people are having these types of homes, that they are safe. And if there's something in that manner that we can do, would be nice if it's considered a rental. Because I, I don't know all the laws, but I believe if you do rent a home, if you're like a landlord, you have to have those type of things. And I'm not sure if that's the same with a short-term rental. So I would be in favor of going forward. And mark me down for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Melendez and then Bordelone.
Thank you. I have a question. So let's just say currently, if we, there was a resident who threw like a, a large party. And I'm not talking about any COVID restrictions here. I'm just talking about normal times. What are the consequences that would be faced for doing like throwing huge parties potentially? I don't know if we have any noise ordinances, whatever. What, what would be the repercussions of that?
Chief, do you want to take that?
Sure. Well, well, it depends. You know, if we were to receive complaints, we'd send an officer there. There could be violations depending on, you know, if we went there and it was excessive noise, it was disturbing the neighborhood, depending on the time of day. We'd more than likely give a warning and say, hey, you know, it, it, you need to tone it down. If it continued and persists, we could use the state statute, creating a public disturbance or, or potentially a breach of peace. Obviously, that's not our first course of action. We prefer to mitigate the problem before rising to that level. But if there's youth that are consuming alcoholic beverages and we're taking it to a different, different type of response, right? And then clearly that's a violation of law. Those are things that we would be involved in. So there are mechanisms that we can use. Typically, we try to do it in a way to mitigate the problem. But some of the things I've heard in this conversation too are, are beyond the scope of law enforcement. So they may be theoretically against the law, but it's something that we don't enforce. So if they're regulatory, if they're violations of certain town codes that may not be something that we would, we would intervene on because we just don't have that, that background, that would be a zoning violation. However, if there were, if this is just a problem, that's where we could get into, you know, working with John Reiner and his staff or working with other entities, maybe fix that. But, but the Councilman Melendez, the, the item that you brought up is something we deal with now. We deal with it frequently, whether it's a short-term rental or it's a, a resident. Our officers respond to those types of events all the time. And in, and in COVID, in COVID times, that does make a little bit different. Nuanced response. There are different violations that we can enforce by executive order and we have enforced them. And it depends, I hate to give you an open-ended answer like that, but it really does depend on the gravity of that party and who is involved. And there's other parts or other components to it such as a disturbance or a breach inclined to, to levy criminal action or.
Chief, Counselor Melendez, does that answer your question? Do you have further comments, sir?
Um, yeah, I have, I have further comments. So that, that was, that was a good answer. Thank you for that. So I just want to know if, if this would sort of be possible, this idea, because I'm not necessarily, I read all, all the, all the pages we had last time this came up. And with a lot of stuff, there was stuff on both sides. And I sort of agree with what Counselor Franco was saying on, it could be very, we could get into some legal issues trying to regulate what homeowners can do with their homes. But what, what I want to say is, is it possible where we have some sort of fine to the homeowner because this isn't going to affect the short-term rental people? But if they're a home where every time they're renting out, there's no, there's noise complaints or whatever, that the town can impose some fine on the homeowner, is that something that's even under the town's jurisdiction?
I think that will be a Mr. Reiner question.
Yes. And that is something that would be under our jurisdiction. That is something that I've seen in a number of the model ordinances and/or other ordinances that municipalities have adopted across the country. And this is one where, when you look at some of these homes and what people are renting them for, I, I had reached out to a friend who has a rental that he utilizes short-term rentals for over the summertime. And he's getting over $600 a night. So when you think about what you want your, your fines to be, our typical 50 or $100 fine is not something that's going to be adequate in these situations when people are getting very high rates for some of these types of rentals. So that's something just to keep in mind as we go forward, if we go down that route.
Okay, thank you. So my last just thing I'd just like to say, I, I would like, if we go forward with this, I'd like to go down the road of punishing or finding bad actors rather than trying to limit the amount of short-term rentals in the town because these are, these are tourist dollars and I think it's good to protect that. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you. I appreciate that as coming from your background, your professional background as well. Counselor Bordelone.
Thank you. I think we should look into it further. I mean, as to which way we go with it. I think there's a lot of different options as a lot was said tonight. I agree a lot with, from my notes here, some of the things Counselor Franco had stated in regards to registration. I think that's the first step. I mean, I think having at least some form of responsibility of the owner or whoever, to register the property. I think it's from a safety aspect, from a safety standpoint for the town. I think it's good to have those kind of on the radar. And then that way, if there's ever an emergency in this town or any other things should happen, like our COVID regulations, you know, you would have a contact for the owner and you can disperse information from the town to them to, so that, that information is, you know, available to whoever the renters may be at these units, like what our mask requirements are for this area, you know, things like that. So I think having at least to start with a form of registration and some type of fee associated with that registration. Some said tax, I mean, we can go a number of ways. But I think, I also like the fact that it also makes sure that the buildings are from a fire standpoint. It also lets the emergency responders know that this is a rental of sorts like an Airbnb or a seasonal rental. And so when they're responding, you might not know how, they, they can expect the numbers to be, whoever could be there, it could be five, it could be six people. So having things that they register the capacity, the, the amount of people that can, that they're planning to reside there. I think this kind of helps the town as a whole. So I'm, I'm interested to see it go forward and, and see what we can come up with. I agree though as well that we don't want something too restrictive on, on the owners. But having something to start with would be a good start diving board to go from. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to jump in here before we go to second time. As someone who sat in multiple meetings with people that were renting their properties out and people that were living next door to people that were renting their properties out, I've heard both sides and I understand the value of a family home and the descendants wanting to keep it in the, in the family and therefore renting it out. And they're being responsible homeowners and they're not being a nuisance to their neighbors. And then on the other hand, you hear about, you know, a party house and how it's very disruptive to the neighborhood and to the core of the neighborhood. And so what, what I would like, and, and I've heard from people that actually let their properties, that they would be perfectly fine, well, some of them that spoke to us, would be perfectly fine with a registration. So I would favor a registration. I would favor a registration fee, right? So let's have a log of everyone who's operating these. Let's have them pay a fee to have their Airbnb. I think we need to have some kind of health and safety, kind of maybe a checkoff that is going to be inspected at the beginning and maybe, I don't know how often, that's a Mr. Reiner question. But just to make sure that it is a safe place, as with any rentals, you have to have safety things in mind. Having said that, we need enforcement. And I spoke about this, you know, I think at the last meeting, we're, we're having more and more people come forward. And as the weather gets nicer, people are going to be working their yards and we're getting blight complaints. And I think we may need to bring on a part-time blight enforcement person. Perhaps that part-time person could be the one that is going to help staff the enforcement of this. The other part of this is you're going to get the complaints, not nine to five, when people are working, you know, normal business hours. You're going to get the complaints on the weekends and late at night. And, you know, we always have our public safety officers available. But as the chief said, this isn't really in their wheelhouse, right? So we may have to think about this part-time person that may have to work different hours, right? Bring them on and have them working at different hours. The other thing that came up in one of our meetings that we had, Mr. Dunn from Noank has done extensive work on this as well. And there are actually companies that we could hire that would take care of the registration. So we would pay them a fee rather than throwing it at Mr. Reiner's department. So these are things that, it, it sounds like we're all interested in some kind of registration process of being able to keep track of things. And maybe what we need to do is to find out if these companies that we could hire, you know, would they be reputable, would they be reliable? And then we need to think about the enforcement and who's going to do the enforcement. So those are my two cents. All right. And we're back to, I want to see if Counselor Parker wanted to speak because she hasn't spoken on this issue yet and then we'll go second time.
I agree with the registration. Can I ask Mr. Reiner a question?
Certainly.
Mr. Reiner, about, do you have housing and licensing fees currently? Is that similar to what hotels and stuff do? Is there a fee for them to pay to be able to renew their license of having a hotel or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of from my department. I don't know if the town clerk's office has any licensing or other types of fees for bed and breakfasts or things like that. The state of Connecticut may collect a fee. That's something we certainly can look into. But, you know, similar to what the mayor was just talking about. And I've actually been in a number of conversations with Larry Dunn from Noank about some of these registration companies. about some of these registration companies that do this and help track and monitor this. And, um, there are ways for us to collect fees based on that. And it doesn't have to be just in the amount to cover the cost of hiring that third party. But if we did need to pull on additional staff to deal with, um, enforcement. Again, it is, it's nights and weekends. It's going to be our Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday type of thing. And, you know, I think we have to work in conjunction with our public safety department. But I think there's also probably, uh, some other things we could look into with that.
Thank you.
And if I could, so just a couple of things, I mean, I, I've been taking some good notes through all this. Just to kind of circle around on a couple of things that people have brought up, any ordinance we would work on for this, we would definitely be working with our town attorney's office because some of this is still very new and how it's handled across the state and the country. There's a lot more questions than there are answers. Uh, another item, when we first brought this up, we from planning and development, and I think our attorney's office were also just stressing, this is not something that we would encourage or to push through a zoning regulation, but instead a code of ordinance type of change. If it was in the zoning regulations, there would be grandfathered rights, and I don't think we would really capture the thing that we're looking for. And then the one last area, uh, I should have asked at the very beginning for looking for a little bit of direction is I think a couple of folks brought it up. But what areas of town, kind of the, the $10 million question here, do you want this covered? Are we just looking at the, the town of Groton, not the city, not Noank, not Groton, Long Point? Ideally, I think we would work with all of them, or is this something that would apply across the entirety of the town from a jurisdictional standpoint? So just something to put out there, because we do want to have the best amount of uniformity, or if we adopt it in the town, but our other, uh, political subdivisions or zoning districts don't have regulations, that's then going to push a lot of things into their areas. So I don't want to push the problem on somebody else either.
Right. And I, I'll start with that. I, I ideally, it would be lovely if it would be town-wide, so you don't have that issue of pushing. But I don't think we can, we can drag people to the table. I think we invite them to the table and we, we explain what we're doing and, um, we hope, as you just explained it very well, that we don't want to push problems to their area. So that would be a good reason to invite them to the table and, um, to, you know, work towards something, some kind of uniformity. We have three people who wish to speak again. So councillor Baumgartner, Frank Owens of Perry.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I, um, seems like the council had a few questions on compliance and enforcement, which I had as well. And so I think those questions were answered. Some asked about if additional resources will be required on the, uh, town, um, you know, from, um, by town staff. Obviously, uh, you have a full plate already, so, um, want to be careful about putting additional responsibilities if, if you don't have the the bandwidth, of course, but, um, in conversations with, uh, did you engage in any conversations with, uh, a question for, for John? Engage in any conversations with, uh, some of our surrounding municipalities as to how they're tackling, uh, uh, short-term rentals?
Yeah, when we first started looking at this, it seemed as though other surrounding municipalities were trying to start, but were hitting a lot of, um, the community, the municipality itself didn't, uh, wasn't getting a consensus on moving forward. I have not done a poll of our surrounding municipalities, uh, in a number of months. It's probably more months than I'm thinking, because COVID has made everything feel like Groundhog Day. So it, it could have been six or nine months ago, the last time that I really, polled some of our surrounding municipalities. I have spoken to, uh, other folks in my position that in some of their past jobs had done this and regulated short-term rentals successfully. Um, you know, for example, when Paige was in Newport, that was something that they regulated. And he had, I believe it was two full-time inspectors that were working purely on the weekends. Now, a little different of an animal, uh, there in Newport and some of the things they deal with in the summer, we're not there. But it, it's certainly, different places are dealing with it in different ways. And in some places have been, been dealing with this for a long time.
And I'm going to jump in councillor Baumgartner, because at the very beginning, we met Mr. Burt, myself, um, met with, um, the mayor of New London, met with the first selectman from Ledger, we met with, um, first selectman from Stonington. Um, and we met with Mayor Hedrick and we all had kind of a roundtable discussion and they forwarded, um, what they have done and it was part of the packet that I sent you a couple of times. So you guys have, um, the Ledger, Ledger actually had one complaint, one party house, and they did a full-on so you have that, you have the information from, um, Ms. Cheeseborough, uh, from what Stonington was doing. And, um, New London didn't, they, they didn't really make any progress more like what Mr. Reiner was saying. So the information that we gathered from our surrounding towns was included in the packet of materials that was sent to you.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. And, um, another question I have is if, uh, planning and zoning will have to play a formal role in, in, in endorsing or supporting any, uh, ordinance or, uh, you know, and changes with respect to our, our zoning codes, uh, would we need, would, would the, um, Planning and Zoning Commission need to, um, uh, you know, support or, or vote on any, uh, again, changes to, you know, to accommodate or, or better regulate, uh, short-term rentals?
Not that I'm aware of. Again, that's something we can certainly look into, but I don't believe our Planning and Zoning Commission would have necessarily a direct role in this. It might be something that we can look to them for some input and guidance, but ordinances are, you know, adopted by the town council. And I, I really think in talking with our attorneys, uh, other professionals in the area, we really want to focus this on in ordinance. And there's nothing comes to mind right now about changes to our zoning regulations that we would have to make dealing with this. There might be some other code of ordinance changes that, you know, once the chief, myself, others, it's kind of start kicking some of these ideas around that we want to address to maybe touch upon some other areas, depending on which direction the council wants to go.
So say the town, um, required a, a special use permit. That would be something set forth by an ordinance or, um, and, and you're saying not, not the code. I'm sorry, the code of, uh, zoning codes?
Well, if we wanted to require a special permit for something like this, we could, and that would be through our zoning regulations. But then if that was the requirement, I'm, I'm not an attorney, but my, I have a pretty good understanding of zoning law. Everyone who is already pre-existing would already be grandfathered into that under zoning and we wouldn't require that special permit. So it, it starts getting sticky if we were tying any of the rules, regulations, enforcement provisions of this to zoning as opposed to strictly an ordinance.
And, and one last quick question. I saw that some municipalities require, um, the resident to actually be physically present when allowing a family or individual to, um, rent through Airbnb or, um, is that something, uh, you know, just maybe, what, what are your thoughts on, on that approach? Is that, uh, too restrictive?
I, I, I think that probably would be too restrictive for the type of community we are. I, I think for a long time, we've seen, you know, we're a beach community. Uh, we have, uh, quite a coastline. I think for a very long time, people have rented houses for a week to, you know, whomever wants to rent them. And at that point in time, a family member's not necessarily staying in that house. I think if we wanted to get very restrictive, that would then get into more, hey, I have an extra bedroom, or I have an apartment over the garage of our house and, and we will allow that to be rented. That is a direction the council is going. I think that's a very restrictive direction to go in.
Thank, thank you, John.
You're welcome.
That was one of the things that the people that were here last talked about too, was having a representative, maybe requiring a representative to be uh, within 15 or 20 minutes of the house. That way, if there were complaints, um, councillor Franco and then councillor Zepary.
Thank you. Um, so it's been discussed, like if we had enforcement, they would have to work on the weekends. And what enforcement would they be doing on the weekends? That would not entail like just maybe a phone call from a neighbor to, like to the police for a noise issue or a party or something that's just, you know, that the police wouldn't be taking care of.
Well, I think both the chief and I can probably weigh on this jointly. Some of it might be in cooperation with the police, dealing with noise. It could be, there's an unregulated, uh, short-term rental at a property. It, again, it all really depends on how restrictive you make this. If you adopt an ordinance, how, how restrictive you make it, that is what would then fall into needing someone that people can respond to outside of the police, that it, it may not be a, a police matter. It might be more just an enforcement matter that we could then direct the police into that too, because if the police are the ones that are responding to all these short-term rentals, then there are other things they're not responding to. So I think that's also an important point to make.
Right.
I, I, I concur. I can weigh in on that a little bit too. While we would work with anyone that was, uh, fulfilling a regulatory role in this, um, one of my concerns would be if, if a ordinance was passed and there were some sanctions that the police department could enforce, we can enforce ordinance, um, you know, ultimately if someone pleads not guilty, it goes to, it goes to Superior Court, where I would be extremely cautious and, and, um, tread lightly on this would be any enforcement that was expected of our officers. I think John was, was very astute in pointing out that this needs to be vetted through the town attorney's, make sure whatever ordinance does come about is on solid ground. We have had instances in the past, particularly at the beginning of COVID, when officers were sent to residences and response to maybe some uh, perceived violations of executive orders. Many of these folks that are renting out these short rentals or are doing this as a business have attorneys involved. First call that goes to, um, someone is to their attorney, right? And then, and then we're dealing, our officers are out there in the field trying to mitigate this problem, but also dealing with maybe, um, uh, legal counsel for the other party and offering other reasons why this is permissible. I, it's a slippery slope for us. So if we're enforcing it, I want it to be very solid ground because I'm also concerned and, and the question have come up, well, if an officer does something wrong or he takes action and he shouldn't have, or if they believe that they took it for the right reasons and it was later adjudicated in court, can the officer be on the hook for this? All those conversations that we've had in recent months where we've put the police officer kind of in the hot seat. I want to make sure that we're protecting those officers if they're asked to go out and enforce these. And by and large, that's why I've, I've always encouraged the councils to consider the laws that are always on the book, already on the book, that we can enforce and we're familiar with under state statute. I'm not dissuading you from looking at ordinances. What I'm saying is that our officers, um, would require some, uh, some training if we're expected to enforce them and knowing what the guardrails are for them to enforce this properly and make sure it also meets with the spirit and, and of the council, but that it's, you know, legally permissible.
Correct. That's what I was just, I was just curious as to, like in my mind, maybe I'm not understanding it correctly is, um, if you had enforcement going on in the weekends to make sure, I don't think you'd need them on a weekend to make sure that they're compliant, that they had the proper, you know, safety things like a fire, fire alarm and, and, you know, fire extinguisher. Those are things that I think would be just a normal routine, Monday through Friday kind of thing, inspections, get your pass and get your certification for the year, whatever, however that's going to be. I don't, I'm concerned that we would be hiring somebody to go to a property to maybe say there's an enforcement issue here that like you're, you're, there's a noise issue and we're sending somebody that's not qualified to go to the house to try and enforce something that maybe that's the police job. And that's, I just don't understand that. And maybe and when it comes to the council, we could get more information on that as well, because I'm not quite understanding what that type of, what you may be thinking of it and how I'm thinking of it.
There, there may be other sanctions that, uh, our zoning officials can can do that police officers can't, vice versa. If it's a violation of criminal law, or if it's something that can be done on an infraction or summons, that's something our officers do handle because it's a violation of a, a criminal law, uh, or, or some other statute ordinance. But the, the sanctions that John's folks can do are a little bit different. And sometimes they're, uh, require them to be, require them to take certain actions in the future, right, John? I think maybe you can help out a little bit, that, but the different roles. What we do is an immediate thing. We may bring it to the court, we may issue a fine, but what, what his folks can do is a little bit different, um, from a, from a zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance standpoint, correct?
Yeah, correct. And, you know, whether it's, um, again, a lot of this really has to do with what it is you want to adopt and regulate. Because if, if all we get into is a registration, uh, type of format and that's really about it, charging an annual fee and an inspection which is done during the week that's yearly, okay, that's something, uh, we can figure out a way of doing that during normal business hours, looking at existing staff and then what we need to supplement. If it's things where, all right, during a certain period of time in the summer, we need this extra help because we want people out and about, driving around through these known areas of town to see if there are party houses that are not registered. Uh, again, it, it all really depends on what you want to regulate. So I, I don't have a perfect answer for you because I don't have an ordinance that I'm basing it off of yet.
And also some of the code violations you had spoken about would be within the purview of the fire marshal of that perspective area. So if it was, oh, over occupancy, or if there was some, you know, weren't proper egress routes or there wasn't proper fire suppression systems, those aren't things that a police officer would go in and enforce. I don't think they're things that zoning official would go in and force. They're things that the fire marshal would force. So you're, you're looking at a whole bunch of different aspects to this that, um, I don't know if there's a silver bullet that says this ordinance will cover all this stuff.
Right. Well, thank you very much. And I look forward to it, coming forward to see. I'll go forward. Thank you.
Right. We are on councillor Zepary for your second time, sir.
I think that this was presented to us to get a consensus as to whether or not the council would like to go forward with this at another meeting. And I think what I'm hearing from my fellow councillors is that generally they, we are in favor of going forward with this in another meeting. I think it would be helpful, John Reiner has said that he has accumulated some, uh, packet we've put together and we got to look at what other communities have done with the same problem before we discuss it again. But I, 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 I think the general feeling is let's, let's look at this some more and see what we can do to solve the problem of, uh, neighbors who are, uh, feeling, uh, oppressed by, uh, uh, these short-term rentals.
Thank you. Councillor Boardlon, you have the floor for the second time.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I guess kind of what my thoughts or, you know, idea, I, I kind of do like the idea that, uh, the mayor brought forward with maybe with the blight in conjunction, that's a good, you know, use of time, uh, because blight issues happen after hours as well, um, as we saw with all the trash that was, you know. So yeah, I, I kind of see the officer of sorts that's hired by the town or whatever they're called, blight officer, you know, whatever we were to call them, kind of to be more in an observed position where, you know, they might, uh, get a some, some tip that they go out there, they observe, write the citation later and then submit it. Obviously, if it's an emergency issue and it's a huge noise ordinance or anything really outrageous, then law enforcement would be obviously already called or involved. But I think initially I kind of see it as a observation thing. So yes, you would need these folks to be working on the after hours to be able to observe such things, write up a citation and then it could be submitted to the, the homeowner. So that's kind of, um, kind of how I kind of think, um, or envision it to be. And I think it could also help, uh, support the blight problem as well, um, in the, in the daytime. So, um, thank you.
All right, Mr. Reiner, I think you've heard from everyone. Are you, um, set with, uh, the direction you needed, sir?
I think I am. Um, let me put this stuff together, see what we can compile. I'll try to put together some type of a, almost a bullet list of some items that we could start to address via either a very, very targeted type of ordinance that would address, uh, I'm hearing very much a consensus of we're looking at how can we have a registration system in place and maybe a little bit more than that as a minimum. And then, you know, the next time we talk, uh, we can also look at some other ordinances or draft ordinances and discuss a few other topics. and discuss a few other topics if there are things that the council wanted to regulate more. And again, keeping in mind, any ordinance we write, we can always change. So we can always start off putting a toe in the water, starting with that registration, a fee, setting some standards and annual inspection, and then kind of watch that for the first year. We can identify, I think if we start doing this, we're going to identify pretty quick what the problem addresses are, working with our our existing public safety officers and hearing some of the complaints. And that might help weed out some of the problems themselves.
Very good. Thank you very much for your time and your expertise. Thank you, Chief, as well for sticking around and answering our questions. Oh, he might be staying, Mr. Reiner. I'm not sure.
I am.
So we are on to item 5D. This is 2024-322 tax abatement for seniors, disabled and veterans. And we don't have a motion, but I'm going to turn the floor over to Counselors of Perry to kind of lead us in the discussion. I believe tonight we have with us Ms. Gardner, Ms. Landry, and I'm looking to see. So we have our finance director Cindy Landry. We have our assessor. I thought I saw Ms. Gardner here. Oh, yeah. And we have our assessor Mary Gardner here. So we have a lot of information that you've received both from Counselors of Perry and from town staff. So Counselors of Perry, did you want to start or Mr. Burt, did you want to start? I'll I'll give it to you first and then turn it over to Counselors of Perry if you wanted to say anything to kind of phrase the parameters for us, Mr. Burt.
I don't have anything particular. Yeah, Counselor Perry has done a lot of research on it. There is a matrix in your packet of some of the options that Mary Gardner put together. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to look at that as well as she put together. The I emailed everyone the list of effect on lost revenue for other abatements. So I think we're just looking for some guidance from the council.
Great. Thank you very much. Counselors of Perry, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Before I begin, I'd like to disclose that I'm in the age range of a senior. So potentially I could be a beneficiary of any actually take, but I don't foresee that happening at at least not at present with my present state in life. I I I'm interested in developing meaningful tax abatements for seniors and disabled people because these are people who are on limited incomes, on fixed incomes. And as we go on spending over the years, property taxes have risen multiple by several hundred percent. And I would I would like to get some protection for those who are either elderly or disabled and are being hit pretty hard by the taxes. I know that one of the people that we all hear a great deal from spoke to me way back when I was running for the first time that she has an income, an annual income of $38,000 and that she pays over $10,000 a year in property taxes to the town of Groton. She was 90 years old at that time. She's 94 now. She lives alone in the house that she had lived in for 69 years now and raised her family in. And she is determined to stay there, but we sure do make it hard for her when we're taking close to a third of her annual income in property taxes. I've I've reviewed a number of statutes and I've sent them on to you all individually through the into the town manager. And they've in the in the finance department has reviewed them and summarized some of them. I think that the there are income limits on most of the statutes that allow for abatements. The abatements are very limited and the income limits are pretty silly as far as being low. There's one where there's a flexing limit and goes up to an income of $19,000 per year, at which you can get a 10% drop in abatement and taxes. There's another where I think it's about $35,000 for single people. Let's see, it's 37,600 for a single person and 45,800 for married persons in some of the statutes. And then there's there are other income limits as well. But the thing I'm most interested in, two statute that I'm interested in, would like to commend to the council is first 12-124A, which is a municipal option to evade taxes on residences exceeding 8% of occupants' income. The the money that is abated, the cost that is abated will, under that statute, be held as due from the property owner and a lien is placed on the on the property. The interesting thing about that is that the person could live in that house for the rest of his or her life and not pay exorbitant taxes, but still still have use of the property. At the end of that that person's lifetime, well, when the person leaves and sells the property, there's a lien by which the town will be reimbursed for all of the money that they abated, plus 6% interest. That's not a bad thing for a lot of property owners. It would be a good option. Another option is provided by 12-129N, and that's my favorite one. It requires that if we exercise that option, we we appoint a finance committee comprised of no fewer than five taxpayers in the town. Those taxpayers would have 60 days to complete a study to determine the impact of whatever abatements we recommend of for the town, the impact of that on the town's finances. It prohibits the town from giving a total number of abatements that would the total value of which would exceed 10% of the taxes that would be collected in any in the previous year. So but it otherwise gives us a lot of latitude of how we handle this. It has an option for us to demand that the money be repaid and even to place a lien on the property if we so desire, but it's not a requirement. I think that, you know, as we're as we're going forward, we would like to, you know, the whole notion of being progressive to me is to look at things that we can do for people who are under particular stress, and this is one area that we should approach. I would, I I I'll go so far as to make a recommendation. I would like to see us get to between 12 and 15% of income as the maximum tax that an elderly person or a disabled person would have to pay. The town manager has recommended that we start off gently and consider something less of a having less impact on the revenue for the town. And so we might start off saying, okay, we'll start off saying no more than 20% of their gross adjusted or their net income would be payable for property taxes on a dwelling that they live in. These are all things that we consider, can consider, and there's no motion on the table now. But in in an idea for social justice, I think we have to look for, look to the effect that our taxing and spending practices have had on elderly and disabled people. As far as veterans are concerned, the statutes are far more restrictive there and the income limits are pretty low and the increments of what we can we can cut, we can abate are also very low. So I'm not making a proposal for that at this time. I think it would be a good idea for us to look at it at some time in the future. But I am proposing that we seriously address seniors, the elderly and the and the disabled.
Thank you.
Criteria for determining the extent of disability and how one would qualify as being disabled. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselors of Perry. I just wanted to note that Counselor Heed, I see he's arrived, I believe, 8:09 approximately. Counselor Heed, welcome. And we are on item 2020-432 tax abatement for seniors, disabled and veterans. And Counselors of Perry had just introduced his item. We have with us Finance Director Landry and Assessor Mary Gardner. Just to clarify for the rest of the council, the two, I don't even know what word to use for them, the the statute, they are Connecticut general statutes that Counselors of Perry referenced. The first one was on page 29 and it was 12-124A on page 29. And the second was on page 30 and it's 12-129N. And those are the two that Counselors of Perry was interested in. Okay, I wanted to see if Ms. Gardner and Ms. Landry wanted to respond to Counselors of Perry before we go for further discussion. Okay, or Mr. Burt, go ahead, sorry.
I just want to point out, I believe we do the 12-124A currently. Ms. Landry, is that correct?
I don't know if she can hear. There we go.
I was having trouble with my mouse. Yes, we do. Sorry about that. We do offer that and currently we only have one taxpayer that has ever taken advantage of it, the 8% of income.
So 12-124A, which was Counselors of Perry's first one, is already in place in the town of Groton?
Yes, that's an option that the town, that the council voted, I'm not exactly sure how long ago, but it is an option open to taxpayers. And I think it was in the packet that we included in the February meeting. Melissa McGuire, who was unable to attend tonight because she's on the BAA in her own town, had discussed that.
Very good. All right. Did you want to say anything else? Because we have counselors that wish to speak at this time.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Counselor Franco, you had your hand up. Did you change your mind or you?
Well, there there is a lot of information here. There are a lot of options. There, Counselors of Perry had emailed us 11 attachments with information to go through. I think this is something that needs to be delved into and to really pick apart. And I think maybe we should like have a committee just review these and and see if they're is something like, as you know, as he had stated, a group of taxpayers and or residents that can look at this and see if they're they think that there's a need and delve into it to see how it would impact the town finances and because my thoughts are we don't know the population of how many seniors some of these things will will attract. I mean, on one hand, we find like 12-129A, there's only one person taking advantage of it. But then some of these other ones, there may be, it could be a certain percentage of our town that may may be interested and could really impact us. So I think that this is something that there's a lot of work involved. And I think if we go forward on things, I mean, I believe this is, I mean, I don't even know how many times this has come back to us. I think maybe we should send this to a committee. And if we can't form a committee or find people to join a committee to review this, maybe we could send it over to the RTM and a committee that they have over there to maybe take this up and review it themselves. But that's right. I'd like to start there. Thank you.
Counselor Aubrey, did you wish to speak?
Yes, I think it would be a good idea to have a committee work on this. I think this is the responsibility of the town council, not the RTM. And I'm I'm sure we could find people that would give us the time to work on it, civilians, if you wish, and then council members and certainly representatives from the RTM. And then review all of these after the budget with Cindy and and our town manager and et cetera to try to come up with with something. But we definitely, definitely do need something to help seniors stay in their homes. Unfortunately, quite often, that's why I'm selling a house for a senior couple or especially somebody that's by themselves, is that they just can't afford it anymore. So and it would also make a difference on our assisted housing. Our housing's, well, I don't know, what's the correct way to say that? Well, we have housing where it goes by their income. We might have less demand on that because we can help people stay in their home. But I think this is a very important issue. I'd like to have a committee and I'd like to have that committee look at, you know, you know, an app, an actual freeze when you reach a certain age that your taxes would not go up. And then I think the deferred taxes is an excellent item also. Because, believe it or not, there are some people out there that take a reverse mortgage so that they don't have a mortgage payment, but then they still can't pay their taxes. So we need to be able to put something together with the reverse mortgage to help assist them with their taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burt, did you want to say something?
Yeah, um, yeah, for that 129N, you do have to have the five-person civilian committee. I don't think the council can be officially part of that. He's just civilians, but you can be there at the meetings and giving input. Now, I think we would want to have Mary Gardner involved early on. And I think Cindy told me she volunteered to to make herself available. So I hope that's true, Mary. Just one other thing, you know, if you do the committee route to keep in mind is whatever the reason I want to take it slow is whatever you do for tax breaks will get spread out to everyone else. And we have a lot of lower-income, single-parent families that will get their taxes raised based then on as you spread it out. Obviously, it's spread out more, but it is something to keep in mind. You don't want to have an impact. You're going to impact other various groups.
I'm going to jump in here and just to clarify something that Mr. Burt just said. The the second statute that Counselors of Perry was interested in requires a committee to enact that statute. I think from what I'm hearing from Counselor Franco and Counselor Aubrey is that you want a committee to investigate further, not necessarily to automatically enact that particular statute. So so what I would ask is if Counselors of Perry, Franco and Aubrey would be interested in working with Ms. Landry and possibly Ms. Gardner to come up with a concrete proposal to bring back to the council.
Yes.
Yes?
I was actually hoping that there would be a committee of people that are from our community.
Counselor Aubrey?
I was going to say the same thing. I think we should have some civilians. And again, representation from the RTM. I I know it would make the group larger, but I think that's a better way. And to the town manager's point, I'm really looking for this to be for seniors. I I think I think that's a group we're trying to help. I could be wrong. And maybe Counselor Saperi could tell me if he had a broader direction.
If I may, yes, the broader direction is for the totally disabled who are also living on very limited stipends or income and have difficulty holding on to their homes because of our taxes.
Mr. Burt, you had your hand up?
Yeah, two things. One, uh, it would be Mary Gardner that would help with the committee. Cindy is tied up until after the budget, so it wouldn't be her involved. And then just to clarify my point, my point was, when, when you give any kind of abatement, that loss gets spread to everyone else, which would include some other, um, people that would be in financial potential straits, like single-parent families, that type of thing. So you do have to consider the impact on other groups. That's why I wanted to take it slow.
Sure.
Um, so, Mr. Burt, as far as, um, like, a small working group to kind of go through all the statutes and come up with concrete proposals, um, I, I think it should be counseled because it is a policy decision. Um, what, I'm, I'm not sure. What, what are your thoughts about opening it up to, um, a broader group? And, and how do we decide, um, which talent we want to tap to help us solve this issue?
You know, there's no right or wrong. It's really up to the council. You might want to start with the council to start getting a better feel for the issue. And then you could look to expand it. That's just a thought.
So, so, um, Counselor Bordelone had her hand up, that I still want to get an answer from Counselor Aubrey and Franco if they're interested. Counselor Bordelone?
Um, thank you. Um, yeah, I, I, I agree with John. I was, that's some of the questions I had about if we abate one area, what would that look like in other areas? So I, I do, um, think it should be a slow process and I, I do like the working group that's, you know, just kind of seeking information. I do agree with Counselor Franco in the sense that it would be nice to have a collaborative effort with other constituents and people in the town. Um, so there might be a way where, yeah, it might be members of the council, but maybe another way to have that be satisfied would be to invite other groups that, um, would support, like, the infor- information and fact-finding in to those meetings. Um, I don't know if that would, but I, I do think having some on board would be great. But if it's not allowed or it's a direction of the council, I, I mean, I think a minimum having, um, you know, sections where you might bring in a certain age group population or whatever. Um, I had one question about it, though. Under the disabled cattle, get category, this is not just disa- people with disabilities are considered disabled, um, that are seniors. This is, um, at any age, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so I, I think more research is to come. I think it'd be great to have a working group, uh, to, to tackle some of this and, uh, figure out a way to collaborate and bring in other folks. Um, but I do have the concern of putting, dispersing and disenfranchising other subcategories. So, thank you.
And so I kind of concur with what Counselor Bordelone said because that's, this is the way she framed it, is how we handle it with the short-term rentals working group. We had a core of, um, you know, certain people, and then we would invite groups in to come and talk to us. Um, and, um, I think that would be great if we could have, you know, a s- set of counselors that would be willing to hold these meetings and then they could invite in, invite in the veterans, they could invite in, you know, whatever group they wanted to and kind of narrow it down for us and, um, come back to us with a recommendation. So, um, anybody willing to step up? Counselors of Perry has offered to step up and work on this. Is anybody interested in working with Counselors of Perry as a part of the working group to begin?
Nobody wants to work with me.
Counselor Aubrey would.
Not a problem.
Okay, so Counselors of Perry, Counselor Aubrey, anyone else interested in working, um, forming the working group of counselors? And then you would be charged with reaching out to members of the community to, um, to help us, um, find a good answer. Counselor Baumgartner, are you volunteering or are you raising your hand, sir?
I guess they're both not, they're not mutually exclusive.
Okay, so you're volunteering. Excellent. So we have Counselors of Perry, Aubrey and Baumgartner. Um, Counselor Baumgartner, you have the floor?
Yes, and again, um, just want to thank the, the staff for providing this, uh, information. I, um, I hope this was the information that, uh, Counselor Saperi was, was seeking initially. And, um, you know, I, I think it's very comprehensive and, you know, it's what we deserve. Um, just a quick question with respect to, um, the, I, again, providing tax relief and tax deferrals. Um, now, the town, uh, has the ability to do so, but, um, wh- what about subdivisions, whether it's, uh, Groton Long Point or, uh, or, or the city of Groton? Uh, do either of those jurisdictions also have the ability to, um, apply a similar, uh, ta- tax relief?
If, if we have a program, can you hear me? If we have a program that's on town taxes, it would apply to everyone, the whole town, on the town tax part.
I think, Counselor Baumgartner, are you still there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, did you mean the fire district taxes? Would it apply to them or did the, are you asking if the fire districts have the ability to implement the same policies?
Uh, yes, actually, the, uh, to clarify even further, uh, the fire districts as well.
Do you know, Mr. Burt?
Well, they're not considered, they're not classified as a municipality. So like, these ones that say municipal, I would guess not, but Mary and Cindy are the ones to, uh, better answer that.
Uh, this is Cindy. I would think that it would depend on what the ultimate decision is. If there's something that affects the assessment, it affects all the taxes for the town, the fire district and the sewer. If it wasn't direct, um, related to the assessment, then it could only apply to the town. And I believe that one twenty four A only applies to the town. That's the one that's over the taxes, over eight percent of income, does not apply to the fire district. Mary, did you want to add anything to that?
She did have her hand up, yes.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, thank you for joining us.
No, thank you for having me here. Um, ye- just by way of background, when we file state reports for the, what used to be state reimbursed elderly taxually for disabled taxually, the state would reimburse the town, the city in Groton Long Point only because they were organized boroughs or municipalities. So the state would not traditionally reimburse for fire districts. And that's the framework that we've worked under. I don't really know, I'd have to study twelve one twenty nine N to see what that language says. But my first reaction would be it would only apply to the town, but I'd have to look.
Thank you. Well, that certainly is something that if the, the working group, um, is interested in pursuing that, they could come back to you on that. So thank you for offering that. Um, who are we on? Let's see. Counselor Baumgartner, did you have further questions? Because then we have Counselor Parker who wished to speak as well.
So the reimbursement applies to only to subdivisions, not, not to fire districts? For, uh, for, uh, specifically the tax, uh, not the tax deferral, uh, but the, uh, looking here, uh, so that it, for the tax deferral or the exemption?
So Cindy, are you going to take that?
Well, I think that, um, it is getting a little sticky here, but I think, Mary, what you're referring to was when, for those programs that were reimbursed by the state of Connecticut.
Correct.
So these optional programs, we would not be reimbursed by the state of Connecticut.
But I think what Andre was asking is twelve one twenty four A was only applied to the town mill rate, not to the district mill rate or the two subdivisions, which is Groton Long Point and the city.
Right. Those, I believe, are paid in full and I will confirm that tomorrow. But I do believe that that eight percent income statute only applies to the town taxes. I'm trying to see if I have it here with me, but I don't know if I have it.
So I am very willing to work with the five-member committee to bring this kind of data, uh, to that discussion.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Counselor Baumgartner, did you have anything else?
No, tha- thank you and thank you for, uh, this information. It was very thorough again and, and thank you, um, uh, Counselors of Perry for bringing these issues forward.
Counselor Parker, you have the floor?
Thank you. I know we've discussed this and just to reiterate, it's only regarding not just the property, not car taxes or anything like that. Is that correct? Or does that include it?
That is correct, real estate only.
Okay. So I don't want anybody confused when we're talking about the eight percent. We're only talking about homes and people who own their homes currently. So that was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Aubrey, for your second time?
Yes, um, Counselor Franco was the one that, uh, suggested the committee and at the beginning said that she would be willing to be part of it. And I'm hoping that she still feels that way.
That would be great.
I don't hear anything. Never mind smiling over there, Franco.
I don't recall saying I would be part of it. I just said I would like to have a committee of citizens.
Well, you know, once you say something like that.
All right, well, there's always time to, to come back in. All right, so it looks like we're off to a good start. Thank you so much, um, Counselors of Perry and, um, Ms. Gardner and Ms. Landry. And, um, so we have Counselors of Perry, Counselor Aubrey and Counselor Baumgartner, who are going to be on a working group to explore this further. Thank you, gentlemen. And Counselor Aubrey. All right, we are on to our last item. This is twenty twenty one one forty one, discussion of possible land acquisition, um, page thirty four. And I'm going to let Mr. Burt frame this because, um, he needs to discuss, um, the potential executive session. And again, I would like him to clarify, um, I, I see your hand, Counselor Franco, but let me finish first, please. Um, I would like Mr. Burt to clarify what we can discuss without going into executive session. All right, so we're trying to do as much of this as we can out in public, right? But there are going to be certain lines that we should not cross publicly. So I'd like him to just let us know that before we get started and then we will recognize Counselor Franco.
Sure, and just for the benefit of those at home, we had a plot, the town had applied for a Connecticut, state of Connecticut, open space and watershed land acquisition grant, uh, we had, for the Watcher's property. We had applied for six hundred and sixty thousand, which would have been seventy-five percent of the appraised value of eight eighty. Um, we received an award, but not the full amount. We received an award of three hundred and fifty-two thousand, which is about forty percent of the appraised value, um, leaving, leaving a significant gap there. Um, so in terms of discussions or executive session, we have a motion ready in case we needed to go to executive session. I'd like to do as much as we possibly can in open sessions. Uh, if you're going to start getting into alternative strategies or offers for the property owner or anything like that, we need to go into executive session because that would affect sale, you know, the purchase price. I think that's the real key, but John might have some, uh, Mr. Reiner might have some other thoughts on things, uh, he feels might need to be an executive. But again, my, my intent is everything we can do in public to do it in public.
Uh, yeah, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development. I think anytime we start talking about anything really dealing with negotiation, um, towards this, just as if you were looking to buy a house, you don't want to show all your cards of what your price you're willing to pay and when you're willing to walk away, um, it starts getting into a slippery slope. So i- at those points in time, I think we would want to go into executive session versus having more of the council, having more of a philosophical question of if you want to acquire open space versus seal-in, getting developed. Obviously, those things, uh, open session. So, um, I think both John and I, and, uh, I think Deb Jones just jumped on the call from the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, the three of us can help, uh, kind of stir the, the direction of the conversation, just of what should be done in open session and what we should stick to in executive.
All right, thank you both for framing the conversation for us. Counselor Franco, I have a feeling I know what you're going to ask.
Whoever's in, can we, can we take a five-minute recess or break?
We will come back at eight forty. All right, five minutes back at eight forty, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are back from recess at eight forty. Um, and Mr. Burt has reminded us that, um, the, the property that we are discussing should be referred to as Wolf Brook LLC, Wolf Brook LLC. Thank you. All right, so Counselor Franco, you had your hand. I wasn't sure if it was just for the recess or if it was for something else. Did you have other things as well or should I go on to Counselors of Perry? We'll go on to Counselors of Perry and we can circle back. Counselors of Perry? Counselors Zepary, you have the floor. Counselors Zepary, you're muted, sir.
Sorry about the delay.
That's okay.
As I recall, when we first looked at this potential purchase, the council was not uniform in its desire to go forward with it. And we, we were looking at applying for a grant, and if I'm not mistaken, we were hoping the grant would be 75% of the purchase price, not 40%. And so this leaves us with a significantly higher expense for the purchase, and I think that's something we have to consider. Thank you.
Counselor Bordelain.
Thank you. Um, I can agree with, with Counselor Zepary on what he stated. It is a lot lower than anticipated. I know you said we couldn't talk numbers. I just try to make sure I stay within the framework, so. What part can't we talk about? Again, just to be clear.
You can, I think you can talk about the grant numbers, what the gap is, that type of thing. It's more if you're going to start talking about strategies or changing the amount offered, anything that would be negotiations would be executive session.
So what about the, the remaining amount that we would have to purchase?
That's fine. It's, people can figure out from what I already said. Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that's why I, yeah, someone probably texted you about that because I, I definitely, I mean, you pretty much already gave the number when she did your math and put it over 100. You figured it out. Okay, so we can talk about those numbers then.
I didn't, sorry to interrupt. Just so you, everyone knows there, just one other factor, we have that land acquisition fund, and there is $70,000 in there, just to, just so people keep that in mind, too.
$70,000. So we're looking at, if my numbers are right, roughly 530,000 that were short, and then take that 70 that you just said we had away from that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so yeah, that's still a pretty high-dollar amount. So I guess, I mean, I think strategically, there is definitely some talk, and if it's not allowed here, I think there needs to be some talk about what other options are available from, from my standing that I'd like to talk about. I'll yield for now, but I, I do think there's the questions I have are probably going to be things I can't ask here, so. Yeah, thank you. So how do we approach that? Will we be circling back around to have a chance to ask those questions, or how will, how will that go tonight?
Let's, let's hear from the couple other counselors who have their hands up, and then they may have questions that also may require executive session. Let's hear if there's anything that they want to say, and then we can come back to you, and you can decide if your questions have been answered, or if you feel the need that we should go into executive session.
Yeah, I mean, I just think with what's presented forward, I mean, I guess the direction is, you're just basically presenting is what I'm assuming, how much we got, and, and that's, I guess, what's the direction tonight?
I think Mr. Burt needs to know if we want to pursue this.
Right, okay, that's what I'm wondering, right. And so, so I think for me, for full disclosure, like, I don't agree with executive session necessarily. I like things to be done out in the open, but I understand with these types of things, there's times when you have to. So if, I just don't want to like dance around asking the questions on a big decision that's going to affect taxpayers at about 400-something thousand dollars. And so I'm definitely going to have some questions at some point, so thank you.
Okay, so let's go, let's take Counselor Heaton, Counselor Obray, and then we'll come back. Counselor Heaton?
Yeah, my, my thinking is we applied, thinking 75, I forget now, 75 or 70% of the value will be reimbursed, and you know, maybe it comes in at 60 or 65. But we also know that, you know, the, the potential, the budget season is coming up, and some things were pushed off from last year, and I would be concerned that we do something that forces our tax rate to go up this year. Especially if, you know, there are things that we put off from last year that have to be done this year. So, you know, I really kind of want to know where we are with the budget now at this point. We, we applied. So I guess my question is, how long does that grant offer from the state stand? Like, how long is our decision window here? And, you know, if there's no real urgency on buying this, I wouldn't be opposed to putting it off.
So John Reiner, we have three months to enter into a purchase and sales agreement. And we need to check with the state tomorrow. We're waiting some final paperwork from them to see what the timeline is for when we would actually have to close on the property. So there is a sense of urgency to move this along. If we're going to take the next step.
All right, and, and I suppose I understand there's like some kind of significance for this property, so there's a reason why we'd want to do it this year. I guess, anything else I'd want to ask, I probably, I'm going to bite my tongue for now. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Obray, we'll, we'll go to you, and then we may need to, go ahead, Counselor Obray. You're muted, Counselor Obray.
I would move that we go into executive session. I think we're dancing around numbers that we can't really talk about. And I think it would be better, in fairness to the owner of the property, and fairness to John Reiner and Deb Jones, who have done work on it. I think we, we need to be able to talk openly about numbers.
Okay.
And strategy.
So I'm, I'm hearing two people want to go into executive session. Mr. Burt has prepared a motion for that. Counselor Franco, is there anything you wanted to say before I make the motion for executive session?
Yes. I personally would like to have majority of the discussion done in the open, and to move into executive session, if it seems like the consensus of the council is to try and move forward possibly with acquiring the land. There was, as Counselor Zepary had said, not everybody was on board with this property at that time, and I think I was one of those people. So when this was coming back to us and realizing that the grant only came in at 40% and not at 70. And my thought is, if we were going to go forward with acquiring land, my thought is, maybe we should have a plan. And what has happened in this location was, the property owner has said, hey, would you like to buy my land? I don't think as a council, we have done the due diligence to say, is this the land we want compared to anywhere else in town? There, we have had much discussion about shortage of land over, between William Sealy and the subbase area, and a lack of open space over there. And so maybe we should look at other areas of town, and what is our priority, and where would we want to acquire land if we wanted to acquire it? There's also the Burrows property down adjacent to the library. People in town are clamoring to get a town green. Would that be a priority? If we were going to purchase land and spend taxpayer dollars, a lot of taxpayer dollars on purchasing land? And my thoughts are, I think we should have a certain type of plan to go forward. And, and I, I think it's very nice that the property owner had brought this to us and, and gave us an offer on this, and we tried. The council had said, let's look at this grant, and it didn't come in where we wanted. But I don't, I personally don't think spending that amount of money without having a, a larger plan as to what we would, what are, what are our goals? And what it, what would be more of a priority? Is this the priority? Or maybe Burrows Field? So these are, I, I just don't think I would feel comfortable going forward at this time. And the manager has prepared a budget, and we're looking at increases here. And that's coming before us. I mean, the budget, we put off a lot last year, and there's going to be a lot that we're going to have to do this year. And with the schools and many years to come, I mean, I just don't think this is something that is, I think, a priority of mine. And from what I, I mean, I, we just took a five-minute break. I already got a text message from somebody who did the math and is, is not in favor of this. So maybe we should think about having a bigger plan first before we move forward. Thank you.
Is, is there consensus of the council to go into executive session? If only two of the nine of us want to go into executive session, then we might not want to do it. But how many would like to go into executive session? If you could just raise your hand, please. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, that's a majority. All right, so Mr. Burt prepared a motion. I have it here. I will read it, and if little town, town manager John Burt, planning director John Reiner, and assistant planning director Deb Jones go into executive session pursuant to General Statute, Section 1260, Discussion of the Selection of a Site or the Lease, Sale, or Purchase of Real Estate by the State or Political Subdivision of the State. When publicity regarding such site, lease, sale, purchase, or construction would adversely impact the price of such site, lease, sale, purchase, or construction until such time as all of the property has been acquired, or all proceedings of transactions concerning same have been terminated or abandoned. With said discussion being related to potential purchase of the Wolf Brook LLC, which is referenced in the State of Connecticut Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Grant Program Grant Award Letter? Or I'm sorry, should I, should that be? I'm going to read it the way it was. I'm going to backtrack. With said discussion being related to the potential purchase of the Watcher's property, which is referenced in the State of Connecticut Open Space and Watershed Land Acquisition Grant Program Grant Award Letter, I so move.
Second.
Moved by Granatowski, seconded by Obray. All those in favor of going into executive session as per the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Franco, any abstentions?
Abstain, Heaton.
Seven in favor, one opposed, one abstention. It is 8:53, so we are in executive session.
Can I just mention something for the discussion on the possible land acquisition? Are we not giving an update at all on that?
We will hear back at our next COW from town staff. So, review of agenda items? Other business? Council Board along?
I just wanted to bring up at the last meeting under public comment, I went back and reviewed the rules and there was nothing in there that precluded a time limit. So, I know that I was point of order several times and I reviewed everything in great detail and even asked other councilors. I don't see anything under that section, under the new rule right, that states such that there was a time limit given in response to citizens petitions. Also, I did review some old tapes and other councilors in many other meetings did ask town staff questions to help better clarify what they were asking in response to the citizens comments. With that also, I can't control how long the staff member may speak, so I can understand if maybe it was turning into a bit of a presentation. But with that, I think I would like to make a referral to the rules and discuss further because nowhere in what was said to me at that meeting, nowhere in the rules does it state that there was a time limit under that particular section. So, I'm just, you know, asking because I felt when I addressed the situation to respond to citizens, I was respectful, I had decorum. And then I'm interrupted and told, you know, not to proceed, which naturally causes a reaction when you feel like you're being treated differently than other folks. So, I'm just looking for some clarification on that so that I can better gauge and judge exactly what's going on because at times I feel things change and I don't see that as written. So, like I said, I did review the rules and it doesn't state anywhere that there is a time limit under citizens petition. It says may respond to citizens petitions and get clarifying. It doesn't say you can't ask staff members, doesn't say anything like that. And we have done that in the past. So, what direction should I do with this? Should I make a referral to rules to discuss this?
If you'd like a referral, I would like you to send an email to the whole council stating specifically what you're looking for. And then the councilors can reply back and say, yes, we support. And then I will make that referral to Chairman O'Bree.
In the past, we've also asked if we can get two people basically here tonight so we can move it forward and I can also send it. But my referral would simply be to review, review citizens' response to citizens petitions. Pretty simple.
Are you asking for support from two other councilors tonight, Council Board along?
That would be nice so we can move it forward. That way, we're on the same page. That's all I'm asking.
I will support that.
I'll support it.
Thank you.
So, Council, Chairman O'Bree rather, Council Board along, Council Heed and Council Franco would like a referral to rules as per Council Board along's statements that she made. Do you need anything committed to writing or are you good with what she said?
I'd like to have something in writing.
Or I can send something to you. It's basically, it's just the one line response to citizens petitions, just all that it entails under that.
Well, I'm attempting to have a meeting next week, so if I have that, we'll add it.
Okay. And if I'm able to attend without, if it doesn't interfere with any of the other sports fields or groups, I'll try to make it as well if it's a time that I can attend.
All right. Very good.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by O'Bree. Is there a second?
And Franco.
Seconded by Franco. Those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? How many are we at? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Who did we lose? We lost Councilors Perry and Councilor Parker. So, we are at one, two, three, four, five, six, seven councilors. All those in favor, please say aye of adjourning.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, moved unanimously with seven councilors. We are adjourned at 9:51 PM. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Greeley. Everybody be safe. Mr. Bird, happy birthday to your lovely wife.
Thank you.
Good night, John Boy.
Good night.